I'll call this meeting order. Our first item of business is to have Patrick McCall of City Church.
Let's pray. Now we just come to you and we thank you for another day of life and being able to enjoy your creation. Take a moment just to remember that you are our God and you are you are a gracious, loving, faithful God. And we pray for this meeting and for our leaders of our city. Pray that you would give them wisdom, that you would give them courage and energy to serve our city. We thank you for them and we pray that you protect them as they serve. We pray for our rest of our city employees and our police officers, firefighters. We just ask that you would be with them every day as they serve our city and protect our citizens. We thank you for Cape Girardeau and our city. We thank you for just all the different ways that you are at work in our city. We pray for all the ways that there's still brokenness and hurt and division. We pray that you would just bring healing and restoration to our city. We pray for, especially in light of this last weekend and the violence in our country, that we pray for peace. Pray for an end to violence in our city and in our country. That we were reminded that we cannot put our hope in this world. And we look forward to the world to come where there will be no suffering and no pain and no death. God, I thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, and the work that he accomplished on the cross of our sins. Thank you for your grace and we just pray your blessing over this meeting. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please do you want to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Big crowd tonight. Thank you, thank you. We have a reason for that. We'll get to that in just a minute. Our first presentation, our only presentation, that is our Beautiful Business Property of the Month. I'll come down front. I'm going to ask Raoul. So when he can come forward, if he's not here, I'll present it to Julie.
I'll make sure that he gets it.
On his behalf and make sure that he gets it. It's Panda Express. If you've not driven by there and seen the landscaping and the stuff they've done, it is really nice every time. We do this, I try to drive by and look at it and see what's black and it is very, very nice. They did a great job.
Thank you. On behalf of Cape Beautiful and Ryan Essence, this is our council representative. We wanted to specifically recognize Panda Express because if you've been by there, you've seen the way they do their landscaping is really part of their stormwater management. And it's a bit unique for Cape Girardeau. There's not that many examples of this. But it's planted with native species and it helps filter the stormwater that comes off the impervious surface in parking lot before it goes into the rivers or the stormwater system. And not only does it provide for cleaner water, but it's native landscaping so it provides for pollinators in our local areas. So it's really quite unique and I want to be on behalf of Cape Beautiful, give Panda Express a shout out because of that, not that many in Cape have deployed that type of landscaping and stormwater management technique. So we would encourage everyone to follow their example. Thank you so much.
First thing you'll do is go through communication reports.
I just have one little thing to say. Over the weekend, we did some traveling and and we wound up in a town of 34,000 people that had a state university of about 8,000 people. So, you know, obviously a little bit smaller, but similar in respect to Cape. And really, you don't realize how great of an economy and how vibrant of a city we are until you see those comparable cities and towns. It's remarkable to see the facilities at their university in comparison to the facilities that are at ours. It's remarkable to see the vibrancy and the momentum of our community in comparison to their community. And so it was just a very eye-opening experience. I recommend anybody while they're traveling to go and look at other communities, see other comparable cities and other comparable institutions and really look at what Cape's got on the ball. I said it the other day, we're a city with momentum and it's really great to get reassurance of that. And so that's what, just a little bit of traveling did for me.
It's like, it's kind of like you shake your hand.
You're beautiful. Come back. Get married and take a picture. It's gonna be a workout today.
We were just bragging on you all.
Congratulations. Thank you. She was bragging on the system and how you use it for your stormwater. I've driven by and seen it and it looks very, very nice. Congratulations. She wants to take a picture.
Thank you.
Okay, back to communication reports. Anybody else?
Yeah, yeah. So on August 25th, I had the opportunity to sit in for the mayor. He was out of town. I went to the County Commissioners Association of Missouri, had their summer meeting here in Cape Girardeau. They stayed at the courtyard downtown and they had dinner and a couple of celebrations. And Scott, myself, Molly joined them for their second night. They were at, they had dinner at Fort Cape. And they all got up and introduced themselves and they had nothing but great things to say about the city, the hospitality, the amenities they were able to enjoy while they were here. And I had the opportunity to sit with one of the presiding commissioners from Cass County. And he and his wife both had nothing but great things to say. They took an afternoon off one of the days and went out and saw some of the parks. So I think it was a great opportunity to showcase our city for a lot of the commissioners throughout the state. And we did a great job and they're gonna bring the meeting back, I believe. Commissioner Hurst is currently the chairman, I believe, of the County Commissioners Association. So I guess whoever the chairman is gets to decide where the meeting's gonna be and showcase their county.
For Charlie, they all want to come back here.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good. Anybody else? I will, it's been busy a couple of weeks as far as the mayor goes. We had a simple board meeting on 17th, which discussed the new interchange design in Cape and Jackson. And decided that the information they were giving was didn't have any drawings and whatnot. People were kind of, they misunderstood the concepts. So we asked them to have a special meeting. They did on the 26th and presented those again. And basically to bring everybody up to date, the original plan called for leaving the intersection completely open during construction. And that is all the interstate exits and at least one lane of traffic hundred. And it, they estimated that to be a little over $12 million and the bids came in $18 to $20 million. Primarily because of all of the staging and the things they had to do were a lot more than what they ever thought. So they went back and looked at, with their bidders and talked to them and went back and looked at ways they could save money and decided that first of all, their plan was to just close the traffic between Cape and Jackson on the highway underneath the overpasses for seven months. Well, you laugh, but that project was, is projected to cost about $15 million. And people were really upset about that fact. So then they went back to the drawing board and came back with a third plan, which basically keeps one lane of traffic open between Cape and Jackson, but it's a lot more complicated. It closes the northbound exits on 55 for the nine months. So you can't come down 55 and get off of Jackson. You can't come out of Cape and get on 55 to go north at that intersection. A lot of people were probably more upset at that and they weren't having it closed underneath, which surprised me. That part was 16.5 million, 16.4, 16.5 million. But it also had other little nuances, like if you get off 55 coming north to Cape, you can't turn left to Jackson. You have to go down Kings Highway, go down 61 and make a U-turn and come back and actually go through the, go all the way down to Park and come through County Park and come back. Cars parked in the sportsplex. Could come out of the sportsplex and turn right, that eliminates a left turn. You can't go left in the Cape. You have to go through Jackson, make a U-turn and come back. Very complicated. So at our next meeting, they, the simple board will look at these plans and vote then on which option that we think better fits our community needs in Cape and Jackson. Vote us not bound by that. They can basically kind of do whatever they want to do anyway. But in any event, it just looks like one of those two options where something's gonna be closed for a while. It's gonna be what's gonna happen. It's just a matter of what it's gonna be and what concessions, businesses and alternative methods of transportation are gonna be had to get to those businesses. Lot of fun. Lot of fun. Staff was giving various presentations throughout the last two weeks to different organizations and service clubs in the community about our capital improvement tax improvements, which is the new, renewed tomorrow, and vote. So I would encourage you to get out there and vote yes and just for the future of our city. To have better streets, to have a better airport, to have a more progressive city hall, to retain Common Creek's courthouse as an iconic building and make it useful again. I had the privilege of going to St. Louis for the Reserve Main Street Annual Meeting. And there were four different people or organizations in Cape Girardeau for awards at that meeting. Lieutenant Brad Smith was nominated for Outstanding Public Official of the Year for all his work with downtown Cape and the organization. He did not win, but the fact that he was a semifinalist was good for Cape and good for Brad. I had the pleasure of sitting at the table with the three other nominees who all won. And Cape was really recognized a lot that night. Isle Casino was nominated Partner of the Year for Downtown Organizations. Zig Fields won Business of the Year. They had their 80th anniversary this year. And the Old Town Cape Historic Landmark Preservation Group for their work with the Courtyard by Marriott and Marquette Building won the Large Project of the Year. So it was a great night for Cape Girardeau and Old Town Cape. They also given an award to Marla Mills. She has been with Old Town Cape for 13 years and she's leaving to pursue other interests, although she will stay in Cape. So that was, it was just a fun evening and we really need to be there with those three groups that won awards. I got to attend several pertinent presentations about downtown projects and historic preservation and that's always kind of fun. So it was a huge week for Cape Girardeau and I was glad to be there and be part of, I can't think of anything else. Just get out and vote tomorrow. Staff. I wonder why Brad Smith didn't sit with Mayor so he could have won two. No, it was great. It was a great day for Cape. I just wanted to recognize the 144 days, was it, Molly? 144 days, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, that we kept pumps running in the downtown pump stations. And there's a, a lot of people who are walking around town who still hear humming in their ears because they've been doing that for so long. But really, these are public servants that don't like a lot of credit. We ask them, I'm trying to come here and I don't know whether we can get them here, we'll try to do that. But they're just, so, you know, like all our city employees. They don't get into city government for the money or the recognition. You get in just because you love people and they love your city and these folks do that. But I wanted to recognize that extraordinary level of commitment to public service. Anybody else? If not, we'll move on. The next item for discussion is a visit with citizens interested in an appointment to council position for Ward 3. I've been a proponent since I've been elected to get more people involved with the city government. And I think I would, I thought we got, we got three or four advocates that could finish and be fantastic. And we had 10 that just flabbergasted me. I really think it's a neat thing. And I wanted to drop that out so there are nine left. And I want to, I thank you all for being here. I thank you for your interest and your willing to serve. We as a council have a few questions that we'd like to ask you and here's how the process is going to work. There are nine people here interested in this position and we have a lot of the same questions we're gonna ask each of you. We're gonna try to limit your answers, if you can, to four minutes or less. When I call your name, I'd like you to come up and maybe introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself and so forth and we'll start asking questions. At the end of this process this evening, each council person is gonna pick, we're trying to narrow this down a little bit, so we, they're gonna pick three people and we'll narrow it down to three. From August 19th, at our next meeting, we'd like those three to come back. And for any other questions, anybody wants to ask them that evening, that's fine. We will vote that evening. I'm trying to keep this an open process so everybody sees what's going on. We'll vote that evening and then that person will be sworn in that night as our new council member for Ward 3. And you'll be there till the election in April, at which time it's up for election, anybody can have a vote. Anybody have any questions? Okay. So we will start. I'm not sure how this list was made, but it was by those who applied first or whatnot. But the first person I asked to come on is Tom Roy.
Hello, I'm Tom Roy. I moved here in 1992, attended college here Southeast, liked it so much, never left. Spent 15 years in public health in Stoddard County, was the assistant director there. There I learned a lot about government, had to collaborate a lot with Cape. I always lived here. I never moved there. I didn't want to really, my family was here. So I would commute every day down to Bloomfield and back. And I've lived in the same house now for 19 years. Lived in Ward 3, I worked in Ward 3, worked for a hospital Southeast, run the cardiothoracic and vascular unit surgery. Coming here for meetings, public health meetings, got to know a lot of the officials here, a lot of the emergency management, mostly. I was very involved in Mark Wiengler, Hashider, a lot of the police department as well. And I don't have any special interests, don't have any special agendas, just wanting to help the city, good city, become a great city. Hoping that might work, my skills that I've accumulated for the last 30 years that I can help.
Council. I'm just gonna leave this up to you to ask questions.
What do you think, if you could pick two or three topics that, now you say you don't have special interests, but some things that are important to you or pieces that you see within the community?
Road streets, obviously.
We don't hear about that at all.
Landlords. You know, we are a university town. We've got a lot of traffic. We've got a lot of people that are city occupants for a certain amount of months and then they're gone. They have no vested interest. And, but landlords should, you know? We've got college kids coming in, moving into our ward, your ward, not necessarily keeping up with the properties. But the landlord should be held to task. I know we have, you know, inspections going on and that's a great thing. They need to be maybe possibly tightened up. Love the parks here in Cape Girardeau. Big proponent of the parks. Would love to see, you know, the parks expand and completing Capahol, doing a great job there. Fort D, you know, Fort D is technically a park, but I think it'd be something bigger, better, let's say, in the garden. Something in South Cape.
Are you aware of the time commitment it takes to interact with constituents?
Yes.
Read information you may get from city staff, prepare and attend scheduled meeting. That you're also expected to be at special meetings and represent the council on certain advisory boards and so forth.
Absolutely. Before I came here today, I seek some advice from past council members. Charlie Hurst, he was my IT guy whenever I was down in Stoddard County. And I knew he was a police officer here as well, so I had a lot of business with him. And I was texting him and calling him and, you know, Pat Caddin, we were college roommates. We were from the same town. We grew up in St. Genevieve together. Our freshman year here at Southeast, we were roommates and he was a past council member. And then, so I called them and I texted them and at first I, you know, we're asking them about the meetings and what days they're on and stuff like that. And Pat was the first one to say, take more time, you think, you know? So we talked in depth about that and absolutely, I'm ready for it. I got a daughter that's junior at Notre Dame now. And so she's grown enough to wear, you know, I'm not taking care of toddlers or anything like that.
How would you get your selected judges to take running in the election?
I don't know. You know, this is kind of, the reason I did run is because there was no election and I was afraid that nobody else was gonna run. And I didn't know who would represent, you know, our district, our ward. I was wrong. So we've got quite a bit of representation here and when the paper came out, I was like, oh, I know these people. I've been friends with them and I thought, oh man, as good as I am. So I was happy to see the representation that showed up in the paper and was pleased. But will I run again? I'll answer that when I get there. This is kind of testing the waters. I'm sure I'll like it. When the election rolls around, I'll make that decision then. You know, I had this discussion already with my daughter and asked her about it and she said, yeah, why not? Absolutely.
What do you think are some of the most pertinent issues facing the city of Cape Girardeau?
Well, there's new topics coming up every day. I think the newest ones right now are marijuana laws and the move of the city council and I think that's a moving target. It's not gonna be the same tomorrow as it is today. Road streets, lights, that's always gonna be a mainstay. But as time goes on, I think we'll have to change with the environment.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brad Toshak. I'm a CPA here in town. Been effectively governor for a long time. I grew up in Oak Ridge, so I've been around Cape all my life. Seen one down here. Graduated back in 89 with a fortress lands and account. And been doing accounting work for pretty much ever since then. Some of the firms that work for have done some audits for cities, counties. So I'm familiar with the financial aspect of what you guys go through. I know it's not always an easy task to come up with the funds to do the projects that are needed. So it's, you know, you have to weigh what is most important to get done right away and what can be put off and wait for a little bit longer.
Welcome back to the question I asked, Mr. Roy. What are some of the issues that you find in Cape Girardeau that are important and that you see that we need to address?
Oh, one of the big issues that I see are landlords. Where I live has become a lot of college housing around. Not always, but several semesters since I've lived there, I moved in in 2001, I've had less than desirable college students. Sometimes they're great. The ones that wake me up in the middle of the night, not so much. Just the other day, I, the same house that I've had issues with in the past, there was a guy out there picking up trash. That's the first time that I've ever seen someone that's a college student going out and picking up trash with, you know, I was kind of impressed, actually. So I'm hoping that there're gonna be a good group of kids there. I like the way that Capahol Parks has been improved. Looks very nice. It's a long way from when I was young, when the pool was there, that's where we went most of the time to go swimming. It's, looks hugely different than forty years ago. The streets, there are some streets that I think need some help. Some of the streets that have already been fixed. They look much better, they drive much better. Doesn't feel like I'm driving down through the fall.
So I think sixty had this question last time. Do you have interest in running for the position permanently in April?
Absolutely. The last election, I debated on whether I was to run. I guess I didn't make up my mind until it was too late to get my hat and whether or not you guys appoint me to this position. I have intentions of running here in April when money comes around again.
I'll ask you the same question. Are you aware of the time commitment necessary to go to the meeting, to read all the materials, to interact with staff, to interact with the city advisory board?
Yes, very much. A former client of mine was Kathy Swan. A former client of mine was Kathy Swan and I know when she was on the city council, the time commitments that was required a little later. Some discussions, and that's been several years, I can't imagine that the time commitments have gotten any less, so I understand that. I have two boys, one's gonna be a junior, sophomore in college, the other's gonna be a junior at Central, so I've got time to take care of what needs to be done.
Yeah. What is your view about the city of Cape Girardeau as a whole?
It's a very nice city. Most of my life, I've lived, actually in other cities, I think. I lived in the county around Oak Ridge growing up. Lived here in Cape when I was going to college, lived in a one-senior apartment. I've lived in Columbia, Arnold, Jackson and I really like Cape more than any of the other cities. Arnold, I didn't care for the hugeness of the city. Jackson was a little bit smaller. Columbia was nice where I lived there. Living out in the country can be nice, but it sure is nice to be in the town where you can go get what you need without having to drive for an hour round trip. There's all kinds of businesses here in town. I can remember the word, by the interstate, those open fields. That's been several years ago, but I mean, it's expanded quite a bit.
Hi, I'm Christina, Christine Mershon. I'm happy when you smile at me, it doesn't help me be formal. Many of you know me and it's so tougher because I know so many and they interact with you, so to stand in the hot seat is a different experience for me. So I moved to Cape in nineteen ninety-six, it was gonna be a temporary thing, about a year. I apparently didn't leave in time. I bought my house that same year, so I've lived in Ward Three since that time. I've worked in Ward Three at the university for twenty years. I managed the Crown Shoe Store that used to be in Town Plaza before that and got to hear Lou Hobbs make music all the time because he was the manager back then, if that brings back way back, way back. I remember when Town Plaza flooded, so intimately I know how important those pumps are. And, you know, I've been incredibly fortunate. I still have imposter syndrome. I laugh that, you know, I feel like I shouldn't be standing here in front of you because I still feel like that twenty-year-old kid. But my parents instilled in me a big heart for service, so how I know so many folks in this room is serving on boards, serving on committees. My background academically, public relations and public administration, through my experiences both in management and at the university, I've accumulated a skill set that's really, really diverse. In the last year, I've been serving as the interim executive director for the Center of Economic and Business Engagement at Southeast. Don't ask me to write that title out. But more people know me as the director of continuing education and engagement here in Southeast. So I've worked with things that are as broad as community health worker and public health training, infant mortality reduction initiatives, economic development. I'm certified in a number of different areas from community capacity building to the most recent, which is conflict resolution. I'll leave that. So really, my whole purpose for being here is much like folks that you're gonna hear follow me, we didn't think anyone would apply. And then when I saw the list come out in the paper, I almost dropped out because there's so many qualified people in this room that I could get behind as my Ward Three representative and I don't envy any of you sitting there because I can't imagine how tough the choice is. So. I know you're gonna ask me a question.
I'll ask you the same question. So whenever you look at Cape Girardeau, what do you see as some issues or tasks that are very important to you?
Sure, you know, I'm still really enamored with the purpose built communities. We started down that road and I wanna see that journey continue and that falls very much in line with sort of my passionariness, so I think that's what you were getting at before, what are you passionate about. I have seen intimately, like the other folks that have been up here, the impact that bad landlords have on our communities. And man, Ward Three is so incredibly diverse because there's so many great things happening, the changes in Town Plaza, the changes in Jefferson, Lee Ragdell is rocking it out. But last week, I was with a shooting there. So I think, you know, it kind of concerns me that no one's mentioning violence and some of the other systemic problems. That's heavy on my brain and my heart because while we go forward and we're really making strides, we've gotta figure out what's going on in the underpinning to address that stuff.
I'll ask you the same question. Are you aware of time commitment necessary to do?
I am and those of you who know how many things I serve on, the first thing Julia came in and said when I walked in the door was you're gonna have to shift some things. I'm well aware of that, so, and that's something I would expect you all who know how many things I'm involved in to be concerned about. I can tell you that if I were to be your selection, I'm very committed in to moving things around and reallocating my time to make this a priority.
Well, I mean, I have the unique perspective to have stood where you're standing last year and was asked a lot of the same questions and I would just mention to you all that the time commitment is real. There are, you know, I've met with council members when, you know, I went through this process and, you know, it's a good time commitment though.
What I think is, I will tell you, economic development has been something I never dipped a toe into and didn't think I could do. Probably if I hadn't had that experience, wouldn't be standing here. And I've learned that I can learn a lot of things really quickly, so I would be counting on that skill to get caught up to speed.
So the same question that I asked the previous to Brad, do you have interest in running in April?
This to me feels a little bit like a dating situation. This may not be a good fit for the council, I may be horrible. And also, it may be something that I find that I'm very passionate about. I won't rule it out. I didn't put my name down initially with any thought and actually initially said, there's no way I'm gonna run. I think as I've talked with people, because I was willing to drop out and had some friends who were really pretty opposed to that idea and counseled me that I should try, give it a shot, they thought I could be a good ward representative. If that happens, maybe.
What do you think is the greatest opportunity facing the city of Cape Girardeau?
Oh, just one? You know, we are so incredibly well positioned. I have been spending more time than ever in Poplar Bluff because they're doing an awful lot of things there and working with economic development. And they don't have the benefit of our location, we're on the river, we're halfway between St. Louis and Memphis. We're so well positioned to take advantage of a lot of different economic development opportunities and tourism opportunities. So I really look at that first, but overall, the people. I, there were some folks from the Missouri Department of Economic Development, I think they met the Scott first, and they came in and they said, how do we reinvigorate a spirit of entrepreneurship in Missourians? And we were down at Fort Cape by the wall and I said, all of these Cape Girardans have that spirit, do we have that? We might need to reconnect people with it, but man, that's an asset. So in addition to the location, just the thought team that you can help here, and I see that like you did when we traveled, so many assets in that human capital, so.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm gonna move this down so I don't have to tip. Okay. Looks to me like you need a senior citizen on your hand, so we can start with that. I graduated from Arkansas State University, moved to Cape Girardeau and took my first, my only teaching job here in nineteen seventy-two. We purchased the house that we currently live in in nineteen seventy-three, two blocks from Jefferson School. Now, I have not always lived in it, sometimes it's been a rental, but we've always been involved in what I didn't know then, but what I know now is called the South Side, the Jefferson Side. So I've had a vested interest in Cape Girardeau since nineteen seventy-two. I taught for twenty-one years, I was a traveling sales rep for twelve years, traveling all over Southeast Missouri, so I really know Southeast Missouri and the north interior Arkansas. Some of you know that I've been in front of the city council two, three times on different issues, so I don't have any fear of city government. I believe that our local area is always affected by what happens on the state level and because of that, both in my career in education and in my career as a Realtor, I've been very active on the state level. Sometimes going for lobbying days, often going for lobbying days because I do believe that what the state does affects us. For the local Board of Realtors, I am a member of the Board of Realtors and have been off and on for a number of years. Shelley, we worked in the same building at one point in time. And as a Realtor, I am active on the state level. I serve on the statewide forms committee, which meets every month in Columbia or Jefferson City. And I do know what it takes to study issues ahead of time and then to consider things, you know, as they are presented to you. Think of being on a committee that is in the room with three lawyers all day long. That's what serving on the forms committee is like, every month. I have been an election judge for twenty-one years, or twenty-seven years and a supervisory judge for I don't know how many of those years, but a number of those years. So I'm used to volunteer work. I visited for mended hearts for a time at Southeast Hospital and I hesitate to run against anybody who has anything to do with cardiac because I'm a cardiac patient. In short, I've always believed in stepping up and I'm not intimidated by the fact that there are nine or ten people because I trust that you'll choose good candidates. Questions? Go!
All right, nice. I'll ask you to, what are some of the issues that you see that are facing, what is near and dear to your heart?
Okay, near and dear to my heart, of course, is all things real estate because I've been a Realtor since two thousand and four. I, my company is, actually has a physical address of North Fountain Street, we're right behind the Marquette. I'm hardly ever there because everything happens over the phone nowadays. I am very concerned about everything real estate, very concerned about education and our relationship with the university as well as, you know, I'm kinda like Terry Kitchen, I guess I might bleed orange if you tell me because I taught for so many years at Cape Central. I'm very invested in the porch initiative and all of the things that are happening around the Jefferson School area. That is near and dear to my heart. I'm a genuine South Side resident. And public safety. Quite frankly, I think we've suffered some since the police station relocated, so I'm really interested in finding a way to make that substation happen that the police told us would happen and it hasn't happened yet. So I think somewhere in redevelopment, we need to make room for a substation.
Are you aware of the time commitment necessary faced with serving on council and various committees and advisory boards and reading and staff interaction?
Well, Mayor Flabbergasted, I will tell you, not yet, but I'm willing to take it on. There's a learning curve in everything. I remember when I first became a teacher, I promised I would teach for three years before I made my decision. I made my decision in year three. So I'm willing to learn. And I'm, sort of since I retired, I mean, my real estate business is kind of on the downside. Like I said, you need a senior citizen, guys. Do not ignore age.
Where do you think I am?
You don't qualify as well as I do. Whip out your driver's license and we'll compare.
Would you anticipate?
Continue to discern.
Yes.
You know, I don't actually know that. I promised myself probably about two or three years ago that I was going to run for city council. I just never got around to it. So I see this as an opportunity, so like I said, there's a learning curve. We'll see. You might be glad to see me go in April. Oh, bless your heart. Come on, what else?
What do you see as the greatest opportunity the city of Cape Girardeau has in front of it?
Okay, the river and the university are, I think, and our medical development all over the city of Cape are our greatest assets. Those three things, we have to do everything we can to enhance our relationship with those three things. And thank goodness for those water pumps that saved our damn town.
They're good for the wall.
Well, the wall, well, yeah, that's kind of obvious, you're right. And that wall's part, it's gotta be rebuilt. Where are we gonna find a non-flood year for that time?
We did a big portion underneath that wall.
Were you holding your breath?
No.
Okay. Success.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, I'm Ashley Romi. I did the first class of the Citizens Academy last year. I was very pregnant, so I missed a couple of the courses, so I wanna redo it, but that really sparked my interest in getting involved with our government. I know that simply voting isn't all I can do and it clearly got me interested and if anyone's familiar with the show Parks Matter Creation, my friends are all like, call me less like, oh, so I really wanna embody that as my, 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 my medium of speaking. So I moved here not really expecting to stay here as with most transplants and I stayed to do grad school instead of moving and then I stayed to teach and I bartended, worked in restaurants, all of that, and then I got into real estate and after I bought my first house. So I bought my house literally at the very edge of Farm South, you can go in our ward. I live on the corner of South Minnesota and Breville. So I'm barely squeaking in here in Ward Three, but in living in that neighborhood and as a Realtor, it breaks my heart when people come to me and I don't wanna live here. And I'm like, I, well, I live there, I don't wanna make you feel badly, but it's a great neighborhood. I walk my dogs, I have a baby, I plan on living there for a long time. So to hear people say that, even people that aren't even from the area, have lived here for too long or don't wanna go south of the Chawney, it just breaks my heart. And so I don't know what I have to do or what we have to do to change that mindset, but I just wouldn't be a part of it. I could talk more about myself, but you'll have to, I've got to be honest.
Ashley, what do you see, obviously you've addressed one, but what do you see as some of the issues that are facing the city or near and dear to your heart?
So I spent my year studying environmental science and ecology and I think a lot of the things that I walk around grumbling about in the city could really be fixed easily with a lot of the things that I learned and I studied in school. And it's really great that Panda Express got that from the ward because that's literally one of the things, is using our local native species to help with stormwater runoff, which would help the streets because they would, the road is quickly. And many of those kinds of things, I'm a big, I'm big on beautification, people who need to take pride in the city, just like with the landlord issues, if someone doesn't live there and they don't appreciate it and they can't take pride in it, then what, I mean, why should they care? So as far as issues, clean streets, getting people to give, I know, give a S, so, my baby doesn't know those words yet. And really, whatever we can do to get people to care, are, I have like made a mental list and it left it as the actual one on my phone, so.
Are you aware of the time commitment necessary?
Not fully, but as with all things... Not fully, but as with all things, I'll figure it out. I make my own schedule. I was not ready to be a mother, and she's 10 and a half months old and she's still alive. I work with her, so I, I've got friends, so I'm more than ready. And I'm also an adjunct instructor at Southeast in the Livelihood Department, so I'm a stranger to having things to do.
Being a mother is most important, right?
Oh, you, yes, nobody can put their mother in a bad situation.
What do you see as the biggest opportunity facing the city of Cape?
I feel like I'm repeating everything that everybody said, but really, the university is one of our biggest sources of influx of diversity. Like, I love how diverse Cape Girardeau is. I would never have dreamed to live and stay in the same town I grew up in, where you see the same people all the time. Yeah, I like seeing some of your business, but I just love the, you get people like me who come here and like, I want to stay here. Look at this downtown, where am I? It's the biggest little city between St. Louis and Memphis. And our downtown, our hospitals, of course, anything that brings people here, and like, I kind of want to stay here. And I'm like, I'll help you buy a house.
I do want to tell you, those sections you missed in the citizens' county, you always come back and you say a lot to me.
I'm probably just going to do the whole thing again. I just, I'm curious if anything's changed. And also, I just.
Counsel intent.
Oh, yeah, of course. And if I know anything from being a student and teaching, repetition is key sometimes.
Are you, are you interested in running in April?
I really am. And I suppose if, even if I don't get to take on the interim position, I'll likely come back and attempt to get officially.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maggie Thomas?
My name is Maggie Thomas. It is not lost on me the distinct privilege that it is to stand in front of you as a potential appointee to this vacancy for Ward Three. Well, I guess while I was not born and raised in Cape Girardeau, and my wife wasn't either, we both grew up in towns in Southeast Missouri, and we came to Cape Girardeau for Chaplain, for movies, and for whatever else. We chose to live and to raise our family in this city and in this town. We are deeply rooted and integrated in the community. I work for one of the largest employers in the, in the community and the region as a physical therapist at Southeast, or not at Southeast, at St. Francis Medical Center. I've got that on record now. My wife and I ourselves are also employers, having been in business for over 11 years here in Cape Girardeau. We own several properties, multiple properties in Ward Three. Along with our home, we also have undertaken commercial properties that have been run down and rehabbed them and renovated them into office space. We have three children, two of which are in the Cape Public School, Cape Central Public School District, and one who is eagerly awaiting his chance to become a tiger at three years of age. We are always active, we instill in our kids, active in volunteering and giving of ourselves, not only financially, but of our time to local philanthropic endeavors and nonprofits. And we are very committed to that. I have gained experience working with the city, navigating the intricacies of regulations, having started my own entrepreneurial venture when I've been back into town, having started it, built it, now sold it, and it is now an active business that offers an alternative, thriving service to the, to the community that was not there before it came. But perhaps I would say my strongest attribute that I would bring to council is in my background in government relations, and for years in government relations, working in Capitol, in the US Capitol in Washington DC. I worked intimately with not only the US senators and with the House of Representatives, but with every, with virtually every congressional committee. My job also entailed building relationships and working on a daily basis with numerous US government agencies, including the Health and Human Services Department, the Department of Education, Department of Labor, Small Business Administration, among many, many others. I was the liaison between them, among them, and to over 100,000 different individuals across the United States. Now, I understand, it's definitely understandable and expected, that there will be quite a learning curve for any of us, including myself, especially when we are appointed to this, if we were to be appointed to the city council position. But I feel I could offer an advantage given my background in government infrastructure, public policy, policy development, budget processes, et cetera, and hit the ground running if I were to be appointed, to get them involved, to get them active, and to really communicate with them. I'm a listener by nature, an analytical problem solver. My family has been blessed by the opportunities that the city has afforded us, and I would be, consider myself very fortunate to serve alongside you guys, to be able to return that opportunity, because I'm a big believer that with great opportunity comes great obligation. And I would love to lend my talents and my experience to the city.
Start again. Same thing, what's, what issues do you see, Kate? What's near and dear to your heart as far as what you see?
I would say, I mean, I look at things through a lens of not only, through a number of lenses, and I bring that to the board as well, as not just a citizen and a taxpayer, but also an employer and responsible for the livelihood of other people that we employ. But I'd say some of the issues are, one that's not unique to Cape Girardeau, but to all municipalities across the US, is the decline in revenue coming in due to, especially without a use tax, with having internet sales and lack of retail. We need to be able to find some way to funnel more revenue to come into the city. But unique to Cape Girardeau, somewhat unique, is that we have the great fortune of having a very low unemployment rate, but it makes it really hard to recruit other businesses here when you can't give them a workforce. And so what is the chicken, what is the egg? But that's going to be one of the main issues, because we want to bring more businesses here and continue to thrive and build our city and bring in the taxpayers, whatever, that we need to create the infrastructure that we have. But we need to have the workforce to be able to supply to them.
Are you aware of the time commitment necessary?
I, yes, most certainly. I am eager. I have the availability, the passion, and the drive to be able to, to serve in the seat, if I were to be chosen to be an appointee. I would relish the opportunity. I've had the great opportunity, I've enjoyed meeting with every one of you through this process, and would enjoy the opportunity to serve on council.
You plan to run in April?
Most definitely, yes. As part of my, when the opportunity came available, I wanted to seize that, and I would like to continue that forward and really make sure, I know that Ward Three of Cape Girardeau continues to grow.
What do you think is the biggest opportunity right now facing the city of Cape?
I am encouraged by, I mean, I look back at what we have been able to, God willing, with the voter's blessing tomorrow, with the, with the capital improvement tax continuation, the infrastructure that we built out, just in the time that I've been moved back in the area, but then even beyond, not just parks and rent, but you have a state-of-the-art stormwater treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, transfer station, recycling facilities, school system. We have the infrastructure in place that now we can use our resources and our revenues in a time that they may be flatlining, to use it towards more, not just to maintain aging antiquated facilities and infrastructure, but to use them for things that help move the city forward, such as, I mean, I had a great opportunity on Saturday, participated in the citizens' police experience here in town. If anybody has not done that, I encourage you to do it. You have a whole new lens in which to look and appreciate the work that our policemen do on a day-to-day basis. So eye-opening. But to be able to give them the resources they need to continue to keep our community safe from a public safety perspective, because they are, the amount of dedication and professionalism that was exemplified on Saturday blew my mind. But we can funnel money towards that, towards purpose-built communities, towards some of these other initiatives that will continue to make us an attractive place for employee, businesses and residents.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Lacy Jay for that?
Hello, I'm Lacy Renette. I work at Cast and at Brew Dog downtown. I bartend at both of those places, I'm on the door drive. I'm 25. My boyfriend and I just bought our house in Ward Three last August, so I'm kind of new to Ward Three, but I'm ready to improve it.
How long have you lived in the city?
Um, I was actually, I was raised and born here. I was raised on a cattle farm outside of Cape. I was still in Cape City women's, so. And then I moved away in high school, and then I had to come back, because the other place wasn't very great.
Are you aware of the time commitment that takes to the council members, serving on different committees and meetings and interaction with city staff and so forth?
Absolutely. So like I said, I grew up on a cattle farm, so I've learned to work really hard. I'm ready to put in the time to do it. I want to make everybody in Ward Three and in the city of Cape just excited and ready to grow the community as best as possible.
Lacy, what issues do you see in Cape that you would like to address?
Obviously roads. So that's a big one. I would really like to even get more parks going. I think this is a beautiful town. I think people respect it. Granted, you know, the litter sometimes is a little over much, but I would like to really get out there and start an initiative to try and keep that clean and keep our city beautiful. And small businesses, I want to keep small businesses growing. You know, without them, we can't keep growing.
What kind of opportunities do you see are kind of right in front of the city of Cape in the future?
Honestly, like our public safety, like we have a killer public safety. Any officers I've ever dealt with, being at ours, they're just outstanding with the way they handle situations. I mean, they are so professional, they're ready to use every resource necessary just to make everything okay. It's just outstanding what our police do.
Would you anticipate running in April?
I do. I want to grow our community with Lacy Jay. Yes, absolutely. April 2020. Thank you.
Would you agree?
Hi, howdy. I'm Sabrina Green, I pastor St. James AME Church, and I also work as a property manager with a company that is actually out of Florida, but based in Charleston. I have lived in the community for four years, so I might be like the newest person who's assigned for this. I attended my first city council meeting before I even changed my address. I believe that city council is what our engagement at this level is extremely important. Not only have I been a regular participant in the city council, that I really encouraged citizen engagement, brought a lot of people to council who continue to be engaged. What else? Let's see. I don't know what else to say.
What is, what, what's near and dear to your heart? What do you see? I mean, I have an idea of it.
Well, poverty is, I think, one of the greatest issues that's facing our community. I think it was last year, maybe mid to late last year, USA Today published an article where Cape Girardeau was listed as the top city for poverty growth in the state of Missouri. Poverty rate doubled. And so when we talk about issues of crime, crime and poverty go hand in hand. And we can't really talk about reducing crime without addressing the issues of poverty. That's very complex, because poverty has a lot of different facets to it. But there are things that we can do at our local level that impact us. And we have to just kind of deal with the growth of poverty. The smaller towns that are surrounding us are feeding into our community. And I don't think that the answer is to keep people out, of how do we partner with communities to help them be more healthy? And how do we embrace those who are coming into our community and help them engage in ways that are more healthy for them and more healthy for us? And then the opioid crisis. And I think there was a recent article about the increase of opioids in Southeast Missouri and Cape County being one of the recipients of over half of the opioids that come through our community. So when you're dealing with issues of poverty also, and you look at the people who are living on the streets, and I mean, it's a lot of addiction and a lot of crime that comes with that as well. Not a lot of resources locally, so how do we attract more local resources into our community and partner with the resources that are available so that we can help people heal and be strong, effective citizens in our community? So those, those are things that are really, that, those are things that are really passion areas for me.
Are you aware of time commitment necessary beyond council, as we're all different committees? And I know you're, you're busy, you're all sorts of things, but for me, anyway, so I know how much time you spend doing it.
Yeah, so we all have the same 24 hours in a day, and we choose how we're going to use those hours, and we choose where we're going to put those hours. And I think that anybody who's invested in anything uses a lot more hours than the traditional workday to get things done. And, and we, we do what, we do what's important to us. And so I'm sure that those time commitments ebb and flow, and you have to, with everything in life, you have to make adjustments. And so you, you make those adjustments when it's important, and this is important.
What do you think is the greatest opportunity right now in front of the city of Cape Girardeau?
I think our greatest opportunity is our elasticity. We have this incredible ability to stretch. We embrace new ideas, embrace new people, embrace new strategies. We are an incredibly elastic community, and that will help us to be able to grow. I think one of, yeah, I think that's, I think that's a really great opportunity for us.
Do you, have you thought about next April?
Yeah. Actually, yeah, I have. And I've had an interest in city council before I moved to Ward Three. When Councilwoman Moore's term was up for reelection, we talked, and if she was not going to run for reelection, then I was going to run. And, but I live in Ward Three now, so that was one of the first things that I did when I moved into Ward Three, to stick when the term was up. And I did run for state representative last election cycle, and I ran because I was asked to run. And in, and the greatest gift of that run was being able to go door to door and talk to people face to face. And while I was willing to serve on the state level, and would have been okay, I really, my commitment is, you know, this is what I really love to do, that the, the day-to-day interaction in people's lives, that made a difference right now. I mean, the things that happen on the state level take so much more time and the energy and effort to do, and you see results so slowly. But what happens here, like this, the stuff we do makes an immediate impact. And that's vital. So knocking door to door, the things that people had to talk about, you know, some people talked about things that would, you know, take legislation to change. But most people talked about their everyday lived lives. They talked about potholes, they talked about street lights, they talked about crime, they talked about their experiences at the local hospitals, they talked about jobs, they talked about transportation, they talked about parks. You know, these, these are not things that are going to be handled at the legislative level, but they're things that we handle. And, and I did do too bad in Ward Three, actually. Yeah, pretty good, considering. So I, I enjoy community life. I enjoy building community and watching things happen. It's not always pleasant, it's not always easy, and everyone doesn't always agree with how to get to where we're going. But I believe that when we all have the good of, the common goal of the good of the people as the highlight and our motivating focus, we, we get to where we're going. And, and how we get there is a little less important than just getting there. And, and I enjoy that process. Long answer, but yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Missy Feigley, and I am an English professor at Southeast. I'm also a fitness instructor, yoga instructor at Fitness Plus. I actually started working at Universal Physique, if those of you have been around for a long time. So I've been with them for a long time. I first moved to Cape Girardeau in 1991. It was a, my parents moved to Jackson while I was in college. I graduated and didn't have a job and needed a place to live. So I landed here, they moved away, I stayed. I really, really like this town. I think it's a, so many opportunities. I, my first job in Cape was for the Parks Department. So the question, what's near and dear to your heart? Uh, the parks. I have a lot of love for them. I think we have a fantastic park system and different communities that I've interacted with. I did my PhD work in Carbondale. I just commuted the whole time. So I was interested, what did they have for parks? Man, we got them hands down. We have a lot of opportunities for the community. Oh, while I don't have a lot of political experience, I have, I'm a member of the Board of Directors for Cape Public Schools Foundation. A few years back, I was a policy advocate for National Council Teachers in English. That's the professional organization that I belong to. And as part of that, we, we met at our national convention and kind of took things back home and worked with our communities, our local and state communities. But I also went to Washington DC and met with some of our representatives to talk about some educational initiatives. So that's kind of my basic experience as far as politics and government.
Are you aware of time commitment necessary for local council?
Yes, I am. I've done some research on this. I've talked to some different people who've been involved in city council and, and yes, I am, I am aware of that.
What do you think is the greatest opportunity in front of the city of Cape?
I think Cape brings lots, lots and lots. We had candidates come in to interview at Southeast. One of the things that I always tell them is Cape Girardeau, it may seem like a small little town, but we service so many people. I think it's like 100,000 on a daily basis. We have so many great opportunities, but I think that we could continue to grow those. I think we can really do things to support small business, support existing small business, and encourage more small business growth. I think that really helps develop community. Roads, transportation, I think. When Renita was talking about poverty being an issue, I know that transportation for people that are dealing with poverty, transportation is a huge issue. And if they're trying to get to a job or it's community service or something like that, and they don't have a car and they have to go six miles to get to their community service and they're supposed to walk and it's raining, that's challenging for people. People that are trying to get things right and do the things that they're supposed to do. So I think there's things that we can work on for that.
Ryan to run?
I think that question was coming. Actually, no, I do not plan to run in April. And part of the reason for that is I feel like this is a good opportunity for me to kind of see what, what this is all about. And it's a great way for me to give back to my community. But my, in 2020, my son is going to be a senior in high school, and I realize that there is a big time commitment with this, and I would like to be able to, like, he's my baby. And I would like to be able, you know, he's an athlete, I want to be able to go to the things that he participates in. So this is one of those where in the future, I would like to run, but in April of 2020, but I feel like there's a lot that I can give back to the community.
Thank you.
Who do you want with the meeting? Are we discussing this with individuals? Are there anybody here tonight to appear before the council for any item not on the agenda?
Hello. Okay, Ramona Bailey, 1433 Kingsway. Okay, and I'm just here on behalf of St. James and the People Shelter and St. Francis Foundation to invite everybody to our homewarming for our four friends that are going to be living in a home now at 827 Jefferson Street. So it's open at August 7th, this Wednesday, from 5:00 to 7:00. You guys want to come out and see their home that has been set up for them to stay in? You guys can come walk through and bring something? No, you don't have to, but we just wanted to invite everybody out of this very near and dear thing to Renita, who's also just up here. So everybody invited, and I just, everybody's on the seat. Is that address again? The 827 Jefferson?
It's August 7th, it's 5:00 to 7:00 PM?
What time is it, 7:00?
From 5:00 to 7:00.
Oh, 5:00 to 7:00?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ramona. Anybody else? If not, we're going to agenda review.
Thank you. We have a public hearing tonight for the levying of the annual city revenue tax for public health, special business district, and fiscal year ending. This is, I always call this a math problem because it basically takes the reevaluation, the properties that have been added to, to the city as well as special road district, and then the limits of hand cop. You basically add those things together, whatever growth is allowed, and it's a math problem as to how much the levy will change. So I think Victor has done that math, and that's what's before you tonight. So that will be a hearing, and that will also be on new ordinances on the first reading. On the consent agenda, we have the second, third readings of the record plats for Southeast Health West Campus and the U-Haul. And then number five is a resolution supporting proposal for Starview Development that will drive in theater site. We talked about this, this was before came to us, and then they went back and did some work on it, that everything completed, and so they are asking for a resolution of support. Number six is performance guarantee contracts for Shadowwood Hills. Number seven is a license and amendment agreement with the Marquette Tower for their sign. Number eight is a final payment to Rod Hall Electric for the lighting renovation at the airport. Number nine is acceptance and final payment pencil for the Capitol Hall Ball Field project. And number 10 is acceptance of the streetlights at Deerfield Phase One. And 11 is to reschedule our city council meeting in October, from October 21st to October 17th. I think we, poll number one, that's the date that works the best for most folks. We had to change this because our International City Management Association, of which Deputy City Manager Molly Maynor is now on board of, so there's several of us going to that, three of us, and so we'll reschedule if all possible. So that's the consent agenda. Are there items on the consent agenda that you'd like to have removed for further discussion? If none, new ordinances. The first new ordinance is for a state block grant agreement for promotion of the passenger air service. This is a yearly thing where we get a block agreement to do the promotions for that. That's number 12. 13 is a record plat. This is for a new two locked record plat. And number 14 is the Savelas subdivision. It takes three lots down to one. 15 is from our public hearing, this is the first reading of setting those tax rates. And then 16, there's no parking along the north side of Jim Berry Way. Go out to the Sportsplex, we have concerns about people pulling out in sight distance as they pull out there and then also pedestrian interaction. So we wanted to eliminate parking on the north side of Jim Berry Way. Then 17, there's a kind of a residual speed limit on Southwest Den Boulevard, taking it back two blocks normally, our speed limit is 30 miles an hour and the other one, slightly 35. So those are the new ordinances. Let council know there is analysis of sales tax revenue in your memos. We encourage you to read that, continue to have flat settings. And so that's for sake of concern, what we keep talking about, and then also just provide the ordinance. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. I will bring up the subject of scheduling a special council meeting to approve the election results, which we have to have within a few days of the election. And I'm hoping to maybe do that Monday or Tuesday, next week we do it once, we can just take a very short period of time. So think about that and we'll talk about that in a little bit.
Thank you for catching me, Adam.
At this point, we will call regular session and have a roll call vote, a roll call.
Ryan Isaac here. Bob Fox here. Robert George here. Stacy Kinney here. Shelley Moore here. Dan Preston here.
I'll entertain a motion for the document agenda.
Sub move.
Motion by Robbie, second by Shelley. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Public hearing. A public hearing regarding the levying of the annual city revenue tax, public health tax, special business tax, special business district number two tax for the fiscal year ending on the 30th day of June 2020. Anybody here this evening to speak on behalf of the public hearing? Seeing now, I'll close the public hearing. Anybody here tonight to appear before the council for an item that is on the agenda? If not, we'll move into the consent agenda. Eric? You had before you consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Robbie. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Before we move into new ordinances, just for the sake of people that were here tonight to appear before the council, I thank you for being here, I thank you for your interest. One of my goals as your mayor was to get more people involved in city government. We started the Citizens Academy, and it's been fantastic. And it just floors me that we had so many people invested in it, and I thank you. We need that, we need that in our city. And I've said all along, more people that are involved and more people that are educated about what our city does, and the more that know why we do the things we do, and they know the importance of that. So again, I thank you. I will tell you that we've narrowed this group to three. And I will ask those three to join us again on August 19th if they're needed, and we will have a little discussion. And Bob, and you'll be sworn in that evening. Those three are Tom Roy, Christine Mershon, and Ethan DeHollis. Don't let that discourage any of those that were not in the final three to still be involved, whether it's running for council, or is meeting on advisory committee, or to be passive. So thank you all for being here.
Mr. Mayor, would you make a motion and a second to approve those three?
I'll entertain a motion to approve those three.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carried. So I guess that's a legal one.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you for keeping us on our toes. New ordinances. Bill number 19-118, ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a state block grant agreement with the Missouri Highway Transportation Commission to fund the promotion of scheduled passenger air service at Cape Girardeau Regional Airport.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Robbie. Any discussion?
Do we know where we're at right now on what we're next, Bruce?
Yes. So far for the calendar year, we're at a little over 6,600. I just got the numbers today for July, and we hit like 1,289.
That's the best you had, didn't it?
Yeah, that's the best you had.
Good. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Bill number 19-119, ordinance approving the record plat of Potsk, first amended.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion by Robbie, second by Dan. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Bill number 19-120, ordinance approving the record plat of Savelas for subdivision.
Sub move.
Motion by Ryan.
Second.
Second by Dan. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also carries. Bill number 19-123, ordinance providing for levying of the annual city revenue tax, public health tax, special business tax, special district number two tax for the fiscal year ending on the 30th day of June 2020, first reading.
Sub move.
Motion by Robbie.
Second.
Second by Dan. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Bill number 19-124, ordinance admitting schedule of PEP for section 26, stat 247 of the city code, establishing no parking anytime on the north side of Jim Berry Way, per reading.
Sub move.
Motion by Ryan.
Second.
Second by Stacy. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Bill number 19-125, ordinance admitting schedule A of section 26, stat 228 of the city code, by repealing certain speed limits on Southwest Den Boulevard and establishing new speed limits on Southwest Den Boulevard in the city of Cape Girardeau, per reading.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion by Robbie, second by Dan. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Again, I mentioned we need to set a special council meeting to approve above the election. The results may be ready Friday, but to play it safe, I would suggest we meet Monday or Tuesday, if we can just get the due list together. Scott's office, we can do it in there. Anybody that wants to come listen to that five, four or five minute meeting can be there. What's your preference?
Monday morning sometime, 10:00 AM?
Yeah, I'm not available Tuesday or Monday.
You're invited. Could we make a right call on Monday?
I would not forget.
We need, we need four.
I'm just now being, I'm, hold on. Monday works.
Okay. Monday work for you? Okay, so there's one, two, three, four, five of those, and so, let's see, Monday, 11:45?
So moved.
Motion made by Ryan.
Second.
Second by Ryan. All those appear to say aye?
Aye.
That's moved.
Does that mean the mayor's by lunch after?
Oh, I think so. Thank you, Mayor.
What?
I'll move to adjourn to close session.
Well, we need to, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to close session for legal actions and litigation, confidential communications, or legal counsel on property transactions pursuant to revise sections 6, 10, 02, 1, 1, and 2. And personnel issues also. Personnel issues also. Motion by Ryan, second by Stacy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will convene in closed session.
Thank you, students, for coming. Hopefully this was a learning experience.